She says she, even though she's out sick, she would call in.
Yeah, she said like she was pretty sick, but she was gonna try to call in.
Okay. Give it like one more minute and then we'll jump in.
Dennis online.
Okay.
Okay, so four oh one, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna start this off. Uh, it's October the twenty eighth. This is the um GBOS and MLE Municipal Manager Meeting. Good order supervisors committees and subcommittees subject to the Alaska Meetings Act, under Alaska Statute forty-four dot six two dot three one zero and Anchorage Municipal Code one dot two five. Good order supervisors, it's good with public meeting standards of conduct. Brian is going to read the landing note for us.
Okay, thank you. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors acknowledges the indigenous peoples of Alaska whose land died on. Community of Girdwood situated between the areas known to be Denina and Alutik homeland respects the people, stewards of this land for generations. We commit to the continued stewardship of this land and are grateful to be a part of a wider community that seeks to maintain a sustainable use of Girdwood Valley for present and future peoples.
Thank you very much, Brian. Um, we'll do roll call and uh disclosures people to lose. Can you do the roll call for us, please?
Sure, uh, Mike Edgerton.
Present.
Brian Burnett.
Present.
Kelly Okanak. Uh, Jennifer Wingard.
Here.
Uh, Brianna Sullivan.
Here.
Oh, quorum.
Okay, thank you. Um, would any members of the administration or assembly like to introduce themselves as well? Yeah, I think three people, four people.
Hi Tiffany Briggs, Real Estate Director and Emma Gibbene Land Management Officer. We are in a conference room together.
Okay. Welcome Tiffany and Emma. Sorry, Zach.
Yep, Zach Johnson from the Assembly, I'm, I'm here online.
Okay, thank you. Um, and Nicole, I think as well.
Yes, Nicole Jones Vogo, I'm a contractor for H L B.
Okay, thank you. Right, and we were expecting um Becky to arrive through Municipal Manager, although she hasn't yet. Um, I'll just go through the other announcements and then uh, or actually let's go through agenda first. Agenda revisions and approval. Um, I would consider if anyone's interested swapping items two and three. Uh, since we can get through then, uh, first two items, they're moved. It's probably going to be the longer one.
Still moved, this is Brianna.
Thank you Brianna.
Thank you.
But thank you, Brian. Um, unless I hear. Sorry. Oh, just a little turn that down. Unless I hear some, unless I hear from opposition, um, I'll do that by consent. But hearing any opposition, so our agenda, we've swapped items two and three, so we'll do one, then three, then two. Um, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes from uh, our previous quarterly meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from our previous quarterly meeting held in Anchorage.
Thank you, what's the date on that? I think the um.
You met last in.
July.
July, but you have already approved those.
Okay. That's. I'm sorry, I'm misreading it, it's a gender approval, not misapproval. Um, okay, announcements, public is encouraged to ask questions and write comments. Please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. Talk discussion state productive, please direct your comments to board or to other members. Have a later, keep your comments focused on business under discussion and be respectful of everyone's opinions. Okay, so item number one, um, after world introductions, is a couple of questions about housing, the Housing and Economic Stability Power that we added last year, twenty twenty-three. I was hoping either the Municipal Manager or maybe the Attorney or somebody else could help us on this. Um, I know there's recently been a couple of um, couple of questions have gone to the Department of Law, to the Municipal Attorneys about what the boundaries are of this power. Um, the previous planning director informed me that he had sought an opinion and got an opinion uh, from the Municipal Attorney about whether um GBOS under that power could initiate a text amendment. You have not seen it, however, and uh, since it directly relates to what um, what the Municipal Attorney's Office believes we can and cannot do, we would like to see that. Um, I also understand that the uh, the Real Estate Director was also seeking a, an opinion from the Municipal Attorney's Office on uh, how land transfer or how management of land could be done under that power. And uh, I would hope that um, maybe we can either get an update on that and again, if there is an opinion, it'd be great to see it. It relates directly to our powers. So um, it might be difficult to compress this from the administration side since the two parties that probably can give us most information are not available. Um, but maybe Tiffany, could you give us an update on um, on the, the question of whether you got an answer from the Municipal Attorney and whether that, that's shareable with us?
Hi, yes, um, and I also just wanted to let you know, um, Becky just asked for the team's link, so she is going to be joining, um, just as an FYI. Um, so the answer that I had got from legal regarding uh, the ability to transfer land management to GBSA is that GBSA is not a department or entity of the municipality. So we couldn't transfer management authority to them, that's kind of why we, um, when we transfer management authority, it's to either Parks and Rec or Street Maintenance, um, since there are departments within the MUI. So it would need to be an entity, uh, department within the municipality.
Okay, thank you. Um, I know that uh, that Becky has joined us, Becky has joined us and as have, I think there's two people from the Attorney's Office. Um, I'll just repeat, we're on item number one on our agenda, which is really two related questions about the scope of the Housing and Economic um, Stability Power, uh, which we added to GBSA, our service area in twenty twenty-three by ballot. Um, my understanding is there were questions coming, it came from both the Planning Department um, and also from um, real estate about various aspects of that power, and I just wondered if we could get an update. Uh, Tiffany just informed us that um, GBSA is not considered a department of the municipality. Um, or maybe part of the municipality, I wasn't quite sure what was, what the exact terminology was. And therefore land couldn't be transferred to the service area, but I have some questions about that, maybe, maybe it's a good thing for Kyle, can you clarify how um, parks, Girdwood Parks land and Girdwood Roads land is managed?
It could be transferred to an apartment within the service area.
Right.
The service area is not a department by itself, right? So the service area has departments within it, roads, parks, fire, police. So it could be transferred to one of those powers specifically, so that, that's what she was saying.
Yeah, so we have, but we do have the power for economic and uh, for housing and economic stability. The question is, is that associated with a department, I guess? And if, if it's not, how can it be?
More of a funding power than a sense of having a staffing power with it. I mean, it's not like a functional department that manages land or, or operates land in that aspect. It's more of a funding power or, or like a planning purpose. Now, like land wouldn't be managed by Planning Department, you know, land would be managed by an entity like Parks and Rec or Maintenance and Operations. So that's where that land could be transferred to.
Okay, so it sounds like there's still some things to clarify here and there is at least a potential path forwards. Could I, um, I'm just wondering if the um, the Municipal Manager or perhaps other staff in law could clarify this position? Basically, which, what we're trying to understand is one of the reasons we put this power in is so we could um, staff, potentially staff other ancillary services or contract them out and to give us the opportunity to uh, to manage municipal land uh, for the purposes of Girdwood rather than purposes of the whole of the municipality and have the restrictions that H L B has.
Absolutely, Mike, and I want to issue a do, a twofold apology for um, A, not being there in person, I'd intended, but I have caught some sort of stomach flu from my children, so I'm exiled at home, uh, where I was trying to click into the team. So apologies for that as well, but certainly happy to comment on this. I think that Kyle has summarized it well, let the legal team's legalities apply, but I think the distinction is between um, like a department.
We're having a little bit of difficulty hearing you. I'm wondering if it's, whether it's on your side or our side?
It may be on mine, I'm on my laptop at home, so I'm a little, if I speak up, does that make it better?
Thank you.
Okay, um, I will say I'll, I, then I'll probably wrap up more quickly than not. I'll turn it to the legal team to talk about the specifics, but I think Kyle has summarized it correctly, that there is a path here forward to do what I think you're aiming to do in terms of having land management authorities specifically over um, properties in Girdwood, but I think it is through looking at the subdepartment within the service area as opposed to the service area itself as a managing department. So I'll turn that to, to Quincy and Eva to speak to more specifically.
Um, sure, so I, I don't know how to say it any better, honestly. I, what I did was find the code site. Um, it's Anchorage Municipal Code twenty-five dot ten dot zero five zero. And that's where it says management authority of municipal property can only be transferred to municipal agencies or utilities. Um, and I didn't find anything in your increased powers um, through the ballot that, that changed the dynamic basically of G boss becoming a municipal agency or becoming a utility. I, I get that, I, I also saw it as a method for G boss to increase your funding um, to do things more like planning and studies. Um, and then I thought the intention was for, to have, like, to have a big plan that would help with housing issues in Girdwood and those would be then funneled through our planning department or through H L B. Um, and it, we'd all be working on, working on stuff together. Um, not that it created some new power that G boss could now hold, hold land. I, I don't see that. I didn't see that happening through the ballot.
Thank you. I have some follow-up questions, but I'll ask the board if there's any other. Is there any follow-up from other board members? I don't want to monopolize. Okay, um, so that seems to be a slightly different answer to the answer I heard beforehand, that um, the management power can go through a department. Uh, because we do already have, within GBSA, within the park side and within the road side, we do have a management of municipal land. So what I'm, and we are clearly, you know, Girdwood Parks is not an agency or utility, it's a department. Um, or it's within the Parks Department, I'm not quite sure exactly what the structure is, but it's definitely not an agency or a, or a utility. So there appears to be a mechanism to do things through departments and it just seems we have this one missing piece that Girdwood Parks is seen as being within the Parks Department. Um, presumably Roads is within DME. Um, Fire Department is within kind of the AFD Department in general, um, and the same in theory with Police. So we have this one missing piece of where uh, economic development would go. And it seems like there is a, there is a um, a sort of effectively Lance's position of a community and economic development. It's not a department, it's kind of bigger than a department, isn't it? There is an entity there. Um, should we just be associated with that when it comes to this particular power? And the original discussion did include uh, managing land locally because H L B has specific restrictions on how it can do things. Um, for example, it cannot benefit, it cannot use taxpayer money. In theory, we can, um, so it was meant to be a broadening of and to some extent also a narrowing of um, the way lands can, municipal lands can be used in Girdwood, it could be used for the. Directly, um, as opposed to the argument that it has to be more broad and include the financial uh, benefits to the municipality as well. So I, I'm not quite sure, I, I think there's a couple of follow-up questions, do you need that in there for you, please?
Okay, I think I, I could be wrong, uh, to your first part. I think the way that those work and, and Kyle, please jump in, because I'm gonna get it wrong, is um, the, the property you're talking about that you, that G boss quote unquote manages is, is under management authority of the Parks Department and they hire G boss contractors, like, or, or on a contract to do the maintenance and operations. So I, I think that's how that functions, Kyle, am I correct on that?
So uh, for example, let's just talk about Girdwood Park, um, you know, that is under the authority, well, it's under the ownership, the umbrella ownership of the municipality of Anchorage, within a service area, the Girdwood Service Area, and then within the, the land management of the Girdwood Parks and Rec. And we do hire contracted entities to work in there, to mow lawns and, and do other things. But we also have staff that work in there as well, so. So uh, under the organizational structure, um, you know, you typically find the land managers within the operations and maintenance aspect of different departments, either through uh, right-of-way roads, um, Parks and Rec or, and, and then the, the larger entity which is separate from everybody, H L B.
Yep.
So, so that's typically where you would find it, but you, our structure is not much different from Eagle River and Girdwood are one of the few areas that have departments within the service areas that manage the lands. Um, where, and then, you know, the smaller service areas in the hillside, uh, they may just manage a contractor that manages the roads and the right-of-ways there, uh, in that aspect.
Yeah, because they're limited to uh, rural road service or limited road service.
Correct.
Okay, but Eagle River actually has it, so there is a separate Eagle River Parks and uh, Parks Department, by understanding, which is separate from Parks Department generally.
Correct.
Yeah, so that's a separate department, we don't have a separate department.
We have a separate department.
Oh, we do, okay.
So I guess. Each year we set a budget for the Parks and Recs, we have our own Parks and Rec Department.
So I'm still confused by this initial question then, because if we have a separate department, the original um, problem that I think Tiffany was struggling with was land management done by a separate department, but Girdwood doesn't have a separate department. So there seems to be some confusion here.
I think that the answer lies in the Parks and Rec Department being the land manager, the Girdwood, Girdwood Parks and Rec actually doing the land management. Correct me if I'm wrong, Quincy, but I think the distinction was that the, the service area as a whole was not the department that would do the land management, but that Parks and Rec could do it. Am I understanding that correctly, Quincy?
Yes.
Yeah, so there is a solution, I think, is the, is the answer here, it's just not quite the flavor of solution that prompted the original question. The advice is do it slightly differently, have management authority rest with Parks and Rec and then you can achieve the desired outcome of local control, if I'm phrasing that correctly, Quincy, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense, so I guess the question then is what's the, what's the right department for this particular uh, area of um, of responsibility? So general economic development within uh, the community, where would that live? With, it wouldn't be a Parks Department, it wouldn't be the uh, right-of-way, but it'd be some other department, maybe it's within the Real Estate Department.
Well, I guess, I guess the question is, is what is the project?
Yeah.
And so like, well, one of the, the driving projects is the RV Park that has been a priority of the um, Housing and Economic Committee. And so that would probably most likely sit within Parks and Rec, because it is a recreational project. So if we wanted to transfer that parcel of land down there, it would probably go to Parks and Rec and then become a management authority there.
That's, that's one of the easier questions.
Correct.
The, the question was if there's other, if there's other land that's going to be for housing, for example, other parts of the uh, the opposite side of the parcel, the, uh, the land which was identified within the uh, within the earlier H L B study. Um, if that stays within H L B ownership, then we are, we have a set of restrictions under how it can be managed and how it can be financed, which would not apply if it was um, within a Girdwood Department. And that was one of the original motivations for adding that power.
Correct.
Discussions with external counsel at the time.
So.
That'll be coming.
So I guess the question would be if we, if there's a section of parcel of land that you want to do a housing project on, what will the structure be? Will the service area be responsible for building it and managing it? Or is there going to be an entity that works and then that land gets transferred to that entity? Like a, you know, the, the housing uh, nonprofit group that maybe takes over and does the project, which, you know, then can be worked out through that process.
So at the moment, the only option, the only option we've had in the past is for it to go directly from H L, H L B to be the center of that process. And that's where we have restrictions, which have been problematic in the past. The, one of the intents of the additional power was to have a way to not have to go through those sets of restrictions. So there was more flexibility and we wanted that early enough in the process that we wouldn't be limited in how development can go. Because we know that other communities have had success in this area, have been able to use a degree of flexibility that we cannot use through H L B. So I guess this is still a theoretical question until we identify a particular piece of land. What I want to make sure is there is a path. There is a path available and the administration understand what that path is and will help us implement it, so these options are available.
Yeah, I think it's like, the details of the project really has to be flushed out to understand what the transfer and the need and the restrictions are.
Ish, I think if we can understand the principle and we can understand how it's to be solved and that would give us more clarity on what types of project can work. But I agree with you, we're building an RV Park, that falls under Parks and Rec.
Correct.
So this is a rather arcane discussion, but important to several things we want to do. Um, and then the, the, I think, at least I understand enough, there are other questions from the board.
Uh, yeah.
Okay, um, and then the part B was um, the, the question that came from the previous planning director was about whether um, under this power, uh, the service area could initiate text amendment for Title twenty-one. And I think the decision there was no, we were not a, um, Girdwood is not a, a board. GBOS isn't a board recognized under Title twenty-one. Um, and I think the contrast there is that Eagle River or Tugiyak Advisory Board is recognized under Title twenty-one. And we end up with this weird situation of where appointed boards can initiate text amendments. Uh, whereas um, elected board in the case of GBOS, elected from the community, can't. We can ask planning to do it for us or we can ask our um, legislators to do it for us. Uh, but we can't actually initiate anything ourselves and that seems a little, a, a little odd, a weird mismatch. So again, I don't know if you can, if Quincy or someone from the Department of Law can uh, help us out on that. Again, if there's a path forwards.
Okay, well, you've already summarized uh, exactly what my legal opinion was. You, you are distinct from the Tugiyak, Tugiyak Eagle River Advisory Board, which is specifically called out in Title twenty-one as um, an advisory and review board. Uh, I think path forward uh, would be a code amendment, that's really the only path that I recognize, I don't, um, I didn't think, again, that the ballot initiative really included anything to say, oh, you have, you've somehow transformed under Title twenty-one into a different kind of board. You're, you're still um, a service area board. Uh, but yeah, I don't think it's impossible. We change code all the time. Uh, so yeah, sorry that, that's, but I also don't think the answer of, okay, now you have to go through the planning department. Their answer was, we're more than willing to initiate this for you. Like, I didn't see it as a huge roadblock for, for, if there's something like you have on the table right now. Um, that's another path forward in the meantime.
Thank you. Yeah, I think the um, the details here for the particular thing we had in front of us, it wasn't a problem. There had been things in the past where planning has not been um, so, so welcoming, let's put it that way. Um, uh, and we have had success with um, with asking um, our uh, Assembly members to do it. But um, it's just something that comes from the community, something that's coming from the community, about the community, typically just about the Chapter nine. It just seems odd that we can't do that directly and it sounds like there is again, a potential path to making change in the future. So thank you, I appreciate that answer. Just gonna say one last thing, I know in the past there has been discussions about Girdwood um, Service Area becoming its own department. Um, I think there's good arguments for and arguments against. Um, I'd be interested in staff's opinion on whether that's something we should continue to discuss or whether the current, the current status is the best position for us to stay in.
I don't know if it would be a positive or complex, or make things more complicated uh, by adding in just another layer of um, because a lot of times when we work with, through a department requests, it's just the same, you know. I think maybe if, if it ties back to this new economic and housing power, then maybe that is something to discuss. But, you know, individually, I haven't had to like say that I need the power of the Girdwood Service Area, because I always identify as the Girdwood Service Area Road Maintenance Department or the Girdwood Service Area Parks and Rec or the Girdwood Service Area Fire Department. So, so it, it's never been like I hadn't have a overcapulating or umbrella service area department, you know. Because, you know, it's already complicated enough the way we have to track finances and, you know, because we work under PM and E and they help us with our Parks and Rec and our fire and our police and, and times, sometimes fire and police. So, so it, it gets complicated as it is now, so.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm gonna hand it over to the board, is there any other questions? No, being online, anybody, the, the meeting members seeing anything? Thank you, thank you very much, sorry this took a bunch of time, oh, Jennifer, please go ahead.
Uh, sorry, just really quickly, um, through the chair, I could not tell if we, did we wrap in the STR question into that or is that next?
Sorry, no, we didn't.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, yeah, yeah, sorry.
It just overlaps.
Yeah, yeah, this is another, this is actually, um, this is probably a, a great um, segue from the, from the last point about uh, text amendments. So um, I think the next big project in front of us is um, is a, probably mostly a text, it might only be a text amendment for Title twenty-one, it might end up being a bit broader. Um, but it's a uh, a process for creating short-term rental registration and the question there is, is the better path, is the administration's advice the better path for us to go through planning or work directly with the uh, with the Assembly? And I'd be interested in our Assembly member's opinion on that as well. I guess the question is really for both Zach and for um, and for the Municipal Manager, whether we would be, whether we should really start with planning, go through that process or start with the Assembly and then go through an Assembly-sponsored code change. This is mostly Title twenty-one, although it might hit some other parts of code.
I think if I might, and I'll, I know, I'll, there's something I want to speak to this as well, I think, um, I would always say, I'm trying to encourage that these kind of conversations start with a collaboration, um, acknowledging that I think that's the best, you know, that's kind of the, the way, the way I, I, I saw things function when I was last in City Hall and a kind of pattern I'd like to get back to in terms of Assembly and administration collaboration. So I think my ask would be have a, start with a conversation that involves both, with new planning director, I think would like to be involved and, but I'll certainly defer to the members on what uh, they, they would like to recommend as well.
I, I, I'll just say, I, I agree with Becky on that, I mean, at, at some point, we would have to go to the Planning Department to help with the, the, the technical drafting anyways, so. Um, I think just from the outset, working collaboratively would be the, the most streamlined way to go about it.
Thank you, that's great. Uh, did you have a, Jennifer, do you have any follow-up on that?
Uh, yeah, if, if you don't mind, I'd like to ask just, do you have specifics around that? Like, are you suggesting, for example, a, you know, a work session or um, I mean, like, just specifically, how do we, how do we take the next step?
I would recommend a meeting, I would say, that involves the members and also um, our new planning director, Melissa Bab, and anyone from her department who she'd like to include. And I'm happy to help facilitate that happening if that, if that needed support, if that support is needed.
Spectacular, thank you.
Thank you, we'll follow up on that, thank you very much. Um, okay, I think we've completed that item, went into more detail than I expected, but let's move on to uh, item number three, which is, uh, I believe um, Brianna is going to lead this discussion.
Yes, thank you, Mike, and thank you to the Assembly and municipal staff for all of your work on the Alcohol Tax Strategic Plan and roadmap for safety and wellbeing. Since the passing of AR twenty twenty-four dash two seven eight in September, I've discussed among our essential services in the valley what might meet the goals for the strategic plan's policy. It's my understanding that the plan is currently more aspirational and not exactly in the budget, but to uphold the communication intent, GBOS would like to use this meeting as a venue to open the discussion named within the aspirations, being a reference and discussion guide of the strategic plan. Under the values section is listening and responding to all communities and the strategic plan aims to ensure community input, transparency and efficient use of funds to make investments that address near-term issues and increase long-term safety and wellbeing. Our Girdwood community experiences pressing problems that are dealt with by police, related criminal justice personnel and first responders. We have several licensed alcohol establishments, which certainly pay into the alcohol tax fund. Our town is the host of seasonal festivals, is a tourist destination and events draw people here that not only significantly provide to the area-wide fund, but require additional first responder staffing and significant planning, serving not only within our valley, but along Ternigan Arm. We have priorities that can build on our strengths and both Chief Weston of Girdwood Fire and Chief O'Shea of Woodyer Police Department have identified a wish list, if you will. That we could all benefit from through the alcohol fund. The Girdwood Health Clinic can also share what their most pressing need is to better serve our community. We all know the purpose of the alcohol tax is supporting first responders combating sexual assault, domestic violence and substance misuse treatment. And preventing and addressing homelessness. And Girdwood shares the struggles of the pressing problems named in the AR. So when we contribute to this evolving AR. And communicating our community's needs, we would like to ensure that our residents and visitors are receiving. A right-sized or more closely matched needs through this fund. All that being said, both taxes of alcohol and marijuana should benefit MOA-wide. So our ask is to make sure this happens in practice. And marijuana is a separate item, but how do we communicate the following ask? May be applicable for both. So the question would be, what is the best path for our community asks? And who would the staff prefer to hear from? Like our chiefs have communicated what they would like, but should we facilitate this request in resolution format? Through GBOS. Years ago for history, we did crisis intervention training. Through the alcohol tax for Woodyer Police and Girdwood Fire Personnel, which was at the beginning of the implementation. But it was a more in-depth process than perhaps all of us desired, but it was ultimately covered. In summary, thank you for all of your work on this great opportunity made possible by the voters across the MOA and through the sale of alcoholic beverages. So we are advocating for our community, how can we best communicate our needs? And how do we administer addressing them to make sure we haven't been overlooked?
Thank you, Brianna. Is there, is there anything you'd like to respond or follow up with?
Yeah, I wanted to ask, I think Ona Brous, our Director of the Office of Management and Budget is on, and I wanted to defer to her to, to comment a bit on this one.
Thank you.
Thanks, Becky. Good evening, afternoon, board. Ona Brous, Office of Management and Budget Director. I think the response to this is the same as Becky's response earlier, which is. You know, there are official and technical mechanisms that the priorities can be relayed via resolutions or letters of support. The initial way that I would request it is via a conversation or email or share whatever the list is that you have from the chiefs. So that we can, at least at a ground level, be aware of what you are looking at and incorporate it either via ongoing. Sort of braiding of opportunities or specifically when we go through our budget process. To determine whether or not there's funding available for some of those efforts. If there is a specific need that you want to see addressed, I would say, you know. The initial conversation leading into some of those additional steps of resolutions or. Continued community support or vocal community support is the way to do that. But initially, I think a, an awareness of what you're looking for is great. And making sure that your assembly members are aware of what that list is, but particularly. The county manager's office and feel free to contact OMB, Office of Management and Budget, and let me know what those. Items may be so that we can keep them in the back of our mind at a minimum all the time, but particularly during budget season. Which usually starts around July.
Thank you.
Thank you. No doubt. Yes. Go ahead, Mike.
I was going to say, obviously, we were a little bit beyond July. Is it too late to share that information with you now?
Absolutely not. Nope. That's it. It's an ongoing process and, you know, budget passage isn't set until about November 19th for this year. And we do still have ongoing revisions in first quarter, which would be April of next year. So whenever the information is available, pass it along and we can start the conversation in earnest for either the. November consideration or for the April consideration.
Okay, so we'll, we'll pass that information along informally first and then go through a formal process.
Yes, that would be great. Yeah, that would be great.
Great. Thank you so much. I'm finished with that.
Sorry, thank you, Brianna. Anyone else from the board? If not, Brian, and then go to Chief Weston.
Question, do we get an accounting of, of our contribution of the alcohol tax to the municipality?
I don't know if you do, but I can check into that and find the answer for you. You know, I had a conversation with Mike at the assembly meeting last week. And that has led me into another couple of points of information that I will be looking into for the board. So stay tuned, but I will look for that.
Thank you.
Chief Weston.
Just thank you to the municipality for providing a venue for us to submit a wish list. We always have a wish list available. I came prepared with our wish list. And then additionally, for that first round of funding, it was incredibly difficult for us to get the funding back. For the crisis team training that we received at the time. I know it's a different administration. I should hope that it shouldn't take six months to try and get the funding back. When we tried to get the funding back last time, no one in the municipality could tell us how to get it. It was very difficult. So I appreciate that this administration is more forward-thinking. And hopefully there, there'll be an ability, if we do have items on there, to actually get funding. So I'm going to send you the list that I provided to Brianna. And then additionally, I've also identified emergency management. Items in our community that don't fall under fire and EMS. But would be necessary if we had a large-scale disaster in our community. A number of these have already been presented to the different, to the Anchorage Fire Department and also the. Emergency Management, your EOC Department, just, but I wanted to forward that. Additionally, you should know, Girdwood Fire does a lot of fundraising for items that aren't covered under our fire service area. And so it would be lovely if there's opportunities to, to not have to do as much fundraising and be able to get alternative funding for these needs. Be great. Additionally, right now, we have an ambulance transporting a behavioral health emergency in our community. Mobile crisis team wasn't available. So we do also do a lot of, this is just one example of the. Work we do, which the alcohol tax was initially provided for. Thank you.
Chief of I, would you mind seeing me on that wish list when you send it to Ona as well? I'd also love to have visibility into that list when you send it.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to make one extra point on this. I think one of the issues we've had in the past. With the alcohol tax, the way it was directed through the administration. Parts of it were administered by the fire department, which I think has a, has a good understanding of how. Area-wide funding relates to, you know, what the AFD itself does and relates to the other agencies, because they work with the other agencies. Some of the money was funded, was directed through the police department, who do not have that experience. I think they are very much used to working within their service area alone. And I think that definitely created some complexity about getting, getting money. I think, you know, APD kind of didn't really think about anything outside of the APD service area. So that's just an observation from the outside. Okay, any, anything else on that item? If not, we will go on to item number two, which is HLV topics. We have many topics here. I think, I think we've already covered the first one, transfer of land management. We've colored that in the first item. Let's go on to Girdwood Industrial Park. I know there is a short presentation that. HLV gave at their advisory committee last week, and I think would like to give us now. Can we keep this about 10 minutes or less? Is that feasible? Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you. Thank you for the time, the time limit there, because we could talk about this for quite a bit longer than 10 minutes. But just for everyone's awareness, this presentation was given to the Heritage Land Bank Advisory Commission on Thursday. The entirety of that public meeting is available, so you could watch the extended version of this presentation. Let me just share my screen really quickly so that I can. Show you what we're talking about. So HLV has been interested in developing the Girdwood Industrial Park for many, many years. In 2016, the first phase of the industrial park was completed. At that time, there was additional phases of the Girdwood Industrial Park. That haven't been, that haven't been realized yet for a variety of reasons. In 2023, in the HLV work plan, there was language that HLV staff was to do a feasibility study. To determine what the next best step for development would be. And that language was reaffirmed in 2024, and HLV has been working on this feasibility study. A draft version of it was presented to HLV commissioners in April. The recommendation at that time was doing it to do an appraisal. That appraisal has now been obtained. And we are coming back to the commission and GBOS. And the ask at this moment is, hey, we're getting ready to work on the 2025 work plan. What is the interest of the community in, in consideration of all of these things for how do we move forward? HLV staff has a recommendation. That recommendation was generally supported by the commissioners. And I'm going to talk about those. Potential options now. If I can get my presentation to forward. When we were looking at this, we identified several factors. This was presented to the commission and also the same information was shared with GBOS back in the spring. This is the language that's currently in the 2024 work plan. We got an appraisal for. Items one, two and four. And. That's what we're going to show you. So the first option is to dispose of. The rest of the industrial park. There are some pros and cons with doing this version. But bullet points on this is that it is not recommended because this gives. The municipality and the community the least amount of control in how the industrial park gets developed. So if we were to sell this off to one developer, they could basically move forward with whatever development that. They could get approved with land use entitlement. The value of this property is a little over $2 million sold as is. If we were to kind of take out the U-shaped area where all the red is, those are all the easements and setbacks. If we were to retain all that, that value is just over $250,000. And to orient you to the maps quickly, this aerial imagery, the green is wetlands. The red is all of the easements in the area. And then the light pastel colors of zoning areas, zoning designation. Okay, option two, this is the preferred option by staff and the commission. It is to take the temporary cul-de-sac, make it a permanent cul-de-sac. And do a tract plat making for. Lots ranging in size from about 2.4 acres to five and a half acres. We followed the zoning line, so there would be no need for a rezone. It largely includes the areas that have been cleared and partially filled. And would provide the most developable area with the least amount of infrastructure improvements. What that comes out to is. There would be, we would, we feel there would be the biggest. Impact for the community to utilize the area for industrial areas. A lot of feedback we heard in phase one is the lots were too small. It was very difficult to get those permittees into their platted areas. Because they, they felt constrained. And so this would give larger areas. Also, HLV would not have a huge impact to the HLV fund. We would do about $200,000 of improvements to do this plating action. And then the value back to the HLV fund would just be a little over a million dollars. Option four is, this is the layout of the approved preliminary plat, of course. Since. This preliminary plat has been approved, it has now expired. We would have to redo this, but largely. These lots are, in theory, still viable, based on all of the code requirements. There would be considerable improvement costs to realize this configuration. About $3.6 million. We would need the sewer lift station and then obviously the considerable length of right-of-way. This particular configuration would result in lots that are considerably smaller. There are wetland areas, there would need to be a rezone to realize these. And there would be a loss of about a million dollars to the HLV fund to, to see this particular configuration. There's a slide in here. I think this is all available to you, but this is the breakdown of how we came up with those costs for the infrastructure. And what we're asking for today is any initial feedback. Staff is working on the 2025 work plan. We are proposing language in the work plan consistent with. What the community is looking for, what makes sense from HLV perspective. And we're going to be doing a work session at the commission meeting in November. We plan on releasing a public review draft in December, which triggers that 45-day public review period. So we encourage GBOS to submit formal comments during that process. And then at this point, I want to say this in stone, but we're thinking that there will be a. HLV work plan, public hearing at the regular meeting in February.
Thank you. Is that the end of the presentation?
Yes, that is the very quick version of what we have done to date. And we are happy to, if you have feedback for us today or questions, we can try to answer those.
Thank you. Thank you very much. My, my sense is that there probably are some initial questions, but. This is a topic that in itself could take far more than the hour we had allocated. So I'm very, I am tempted to see if we can schedule a follow-up meeting just on this topic, on the future of the industrial park. With, you know, the GBOS. So we will. If other people are interested in doing that, I think we should. But for the moment, let's just give initial feedback. Anything from the board?
I attended the, the meeting last Thursday and, and watched this and I appreciate them coming here for this one. I think we've got a lot of comments out there, that's for sure. So nothing to say from me.
Would you say that it's, that it's likely that we're going to agree with option two? It's possible, but do you think it's likely?
I think it's likely.
Any other comments from the board? I'm just adding that I'm not sure, I mean, I, again, I appreciate all the work. I think there's a lot of follow-up questions, particularly about what would happen after if you followed option B. What would happen, what the expectation would be for any further development of those tracts beyond this? And whether we're actually, whether we're effectively setting up limits to how they could be developed further. But again, I, I think we have a lot more detail to work through. Brianna?
Oh, thank you, Mike. I was saying something along the lines you, you just stated. So I'll just thank the presenters. And there was a question last Thursday about option two being. Not so permanent, even though that you said permanent roundabout. But allowing for further development someday into the future. So I think that question might be good to go over again in this setting and then have a, a deeper meeting later. Thanks.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we should have a work session on this specific topic, because there is just a lot to discuss. And I know there are a lot of community members with many questions and many opinions. So I would like to schedule a follow-up, possibly during, probably during November. Anyone else wants to, we can either make that formal step or we can just go ahead and do it. I'm not hearing anyone object, so we'll go ahead and schedule one. Okay, anything else from the board?
Oh, I was just going to say, I'd like to hear the people who are in the room to speak on this topic. I think it's important to honor their time.
Yeah, absolutely. We do have a couple of other things to discuss with HLV, so let's try and keep this to just initial thoughts. So let's start in the room. I'll start at the back and then, and then to Cheryl and Amanda. Did anyone else have a hand up in there?
Hi, my name is Louise Shum, and we run a business down there. I'm currently in P and D, and I just want to bring to everybody the attention that there are businesses that run down there. That would not be able to run even with option two going forward. We run a woodmill down there. There's no other place for us to operate. We run a woodmill down there, there's no other place for us to operate. We run it down there for four years. So if this moves forward, we would like to be protected in some way and we wish that you just keep us businesses that run down there currently in mind.
Can I just ask um how much, so I think the the. The option four is talking about maybe half acre lots or less than an acre in many cases.
Yes.
And these are like two to four acre.
Yes.
What sort of size do you need for your business?
A woodlot could be as big as, I mean, we we run a mill, the bigger, um, you know, we were. We need a, we would like a large lot, but we, it's depends on cost for us.
Okay.
We can run it on a smaller lot if it's cost effective for us to.
Uh, Michelle, second.
Uh, just reminding everybody uh that uh Girdwood Fire has an interest in the industrial park in terms of having a fire training area. This is our only location to have a fire training area and cut up cars and things like that. Um, we are very happy to be co-located with the other municipal services down there. But recognize that our, with our recent insurance read, I S O review, um, they did say, where's your training lot? We said, well, we don't really have one. Because we don't have a permitted one down there and uh it did count us marks against our insurance rating, which affects everybody in the valley. So just a reminder, um, we have an interest, once we are told where we can go, we will be applying for a four hundred thousand dollar grant to build a fire training prop similar to Cheviac. Um, but again, we can be co-located um with the municipal site, but just recognize. Only just land available in the valley, have a lot of development pressure going on the valley in the next twenty years. Let's make sure enough of the heritage land bank land, which is supposed to be for municipal purpose, is reserved for municipal purpose in the future.
Thank you, Amanda, please come on.
All right, Amanda Tuttle. So. H L B is non-compliant with municipal code title twenty five forty point oh two five, which is H L B self-titled land disposal codes. H L B is ordering the asset value reports and feasibility studies for monetary value assessments for disposal. However, is not ordering the land use site specific studies for non-mon- non-mon- uh monetary assessments as required by municipal code. By doing so, the public is not being informed. Neither is the public utility departments within the municipality. Such as water, wastewater and sewage, which is leading to non-compliance issues within this valley. In return, the public of Girdwood is not being informed until H L B has a packet to submit to the assembly. Where once that occurs, it is generally too late for the public to have input. I have put in two formal requests over the past year, so it's entertaining to hear that we're coming back onto next year's work plan. When I specifically, my comment was accepted and formally put into last year's work plan. That H L B shall complete a site-specific land use plan in accordance to title twenty five forty point oh two five C. Six months ago, on April twenty fifth, I also requested in an email that H L B shall do this. Still to this day, my email has never been acknowledged with any formal or informal correspondence. Additionally, H L B is non-compliant with their own self-titled land disposal process codes. Let me paraphrase it for you. The Heritage Land Bank Advisory Commission shall recommend and submit. Written policy and procedures to manage uncommitted municipal land to benefit the present and future citizens of Anchorage. Promote orderly development and achieve the goals of the comprehensive plan. There's a problem here, guys. Old Girdwood has been written out of its own land use plans and is creating problems. The two thousand seven M O A coastal management plan, even though defunded, should still be an active document and it explicitly states. The old Girdwood town site area should be described as, one, an area of unique scarce, fragile and vulnerable natural habitat. Physical features and scenic importance. Two, an area of unique geological and topographic significance that is susceptible to industrial and commercial development. And three, an area of significant hazard. Because of storms, slides, floods and erosion. H L B has not completed a site-specific land use study for the entire Girdwood Valley. Ever since the land was selected or conveyed to them. That is almost fifty years of management. Both, it is not, additionally, H L B's land use studies are non-compliant with the two thousand coastal management plan and the nineteen ninety four turning around our management plan. That addresses, that specifically tells H L B that they need to address the impacts. Of upstream urban commercial development on the old Girdwood town site. Not only should H L B complete a compliant site-specific land use study. They should also overturn all of their recent land sales and there's until they can prove that their land disposals are compliant with both of these documents. Additionally, the land shall should be stopped until, no. Until the levy no longer poses a safety risk to the lives to the people living behind the levy.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Can we, I just want to go to uh, to Bob had a question.
Um, just to the H L B, I think Nicole's your name, can you speak to why a site-specific land use plan hasn't been completed? I know that was an issue in Holton Hills as well, so the trend is somewhat concerning to me.
Yeah, I can answer that, um, site-specific land use studies are done when the comprehensive plan does not provide enough information. On how future land use is supposed to be completed. So I can think of a few that we've done, like Carroll Creek in Eagle River. In the Eagle River to get comprehensive plan, that area was land use zoning was not designated for that area. So we did a site-specific land use study for that area. There's not a similar type of allocation in the Girdwood Valley that would trigger a site-specific land use study requirement by code. So that's why one has not been completed.
Thank you.
Thank you, um, Bob, please go ahead.
Yeah, my name is Robert Wolf, I run a snow free plowing and sanding here in Girdwood for the last thirty three years. Uh, I encourage you to read my letter that I wrote to H L B and the Girdwood Board of Supervisors, I'm sure people can get copies. Especially you, Assembly members. I uh have been a leaseholder in the Girdwood Industrial Park since I squatted there. It's the only way I could get a lot. And um, I do believe the um. Alternative to the staff recommendation for the four lots, however, that. Possibly might benefit my business. I am uh still against the uh direction of development. Uh, I feel that the whole Girdwood Industrial Park needs to get developed. Um, I know the lot sizes are um of a concern, there's a lot of things that basically are running off of a. Forty or fifty year old surveys. And uh, that's why phase one was small lots that aren't real desirable, so to speak, unless you're. In that big one. Um, and so there's, there's a lot of things on this Girdwood Industrial Park that really the Assembly. Needs to uh get the planning department. Um, involved, there is no plan, right now, the plan is. It's best for H L B's bottom line account that they just do minimum development on option two. Um, my letter states how I am requesting to move from my lot. To Lot D, it looks like you're calling it. And uh, you know, that's because it just makes sense. Um, I don't see anything coming out of H L B that's ever made sense. And so I request the Girdwood Board of Supervisors to request money to plan. Um, for the future development of this um ASAP, not just for lots. Because I was at that presentation on Thursday and Lot C and Lot B are still um. Really in the uh, they don't know really what they want to do with them. Um, they, and I even heard reference that they might want to hold on to some of that for leaseholders. Well, what good does it do for leaseholders if. Heritage Land Bank won't ever do anything at the Girdwood Industrial Park. It's been way too long and um, I I'll leave it at that, if anybody has any questions or you may call me on my uh and I'll talk all day about it. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. We had a couple more, um, we had a couple more items that I think we do want to briefly touch on for H L B and then we'll move on to the public comment. Um, so I think good with land use study, we got an answer. Can you uh, actually, Kyle, can you just say a little bit about the levies? Particularly the California Creek?
Uh, maybe Tiffany, can you speak to the California Creek and where we're at with the funding for the sign on that?
Yes, um, so I need, so I think when I had originally talked to you, Kyle, um, I had indicated that. Um, the real estate department, not H L B, because it's not a um, H L B parcel, um. Had found some money, um. Subsequently, there was a. Um, a real estate project that came in and had to use that funding. Being that this parcel is under A S D, I've reached out to them, um. Because it is under their management authority, so I'm still working through, still working through that, but I should have an answer for you.
Just time scale, when you, when you expect to get an answer, just.
Um, I will follow up with them this week, um, so this week.
Thank you, um, and then the other, the other question is on the um, old Girdwood um levy. Who can update on that? I know you've been looking into this, uh, Kyle.
I um, as to funding it, as to what the status is, what are the next steps are? Uh, I think H L B would probably be the more authority on it.
Thank you.
Sure.
Hi, uh, am I here, Land Management Officer, I can help with that. Um, we have been looking into this area, this is an H L B parcel. Um, and we've been looking to this for probably six weeks at this point. Um, we are working on a memo that has uh gathered a ton of the history. Of the parcel and um all the different agencies uh that have. Um, involvement in the area, the railroad, the sewer highway, um fishing game, we've talked to um. A watershed planning, a ton of different municipal agencies, just to get. An idea of what the different requirements are, um, also the Army Corps of Engineers, uh, and the main. I will, I I think we'll probably have a solid draft by the end of the week that I'm happy to share with everybody. Um, and I apologize, I, we really tried to get it done um before this meeting, but we had our commission meeting last week and everything, so it kind of just. Uh, got held back for a few days. Uh, but the main takeaway is that, you know, this, this embankment was built in the fifties and um. And at this point, you know, there hasn't been any significant um. Maintenance or construction on it as far as we can tell since then, or at least not since the earthquake in sixty four. And um. And there's no federal, state or municipal requirements for any uh monitoring or reporting. Um, that being said, we've had multiple people go and um, you know, look at it and we don't have any immediate concerns. The sewer highway doesn't have any immediate concerns, the railroad doesn't have any concerns, um. So we're, you know, I'm, we're gathering information, I can um share this report or this memo. Um, and if there's further questions after that, we can have another conversation. Um, you know, we're happy to to dig up information, share information, it's, it's definitely been interesting learning more about this area.
Thank you very much, um. There is also, there, there's also been a question about uh getting a, another gauge for uh California, or at least after the confluence with California Creek. And again, I'm going to look to you, Kyle, because I know you've been involved more.
I have not heard any progress on that.
Okay, where are we, where is that being pursued? Is this just a federal question or is this something that the municipality has a role in?
Well, the gauge would probably most likely be located on the Lascaux Railroad Bridge, so we probably have to work through that, but.
Okay.
I have not been directly involved with that.
Okay, so we'll uh, we'll come to that later, thank you. And uh, I think the last thing in this list was um. The discussion which we've had both within G B O S about a hydrological study for the, for the whole of the watershed. Um, again, I'm looking to you, Kyle, because I know you've been uh, you've been coordinating and getting lots of opinions on this. What would be the next steps for that?
Uh, the service area wanted to fund the hydrological study for the valley that could be within their powers and are certain, you know, for land management reasons for. Um, so yeah, that would be a funding source, but are you looking for, I think the request was for H L B didn't come out.
For the municipality as a whole to do it, whether it be H L B or some other body. Uh, good, good question, H L B, could you handle that question?
Sure, so the watershed department within the municipality would be the correct agency to. Um, do that type of study. So we would defer to them, um, like I said, they would be the agency that would handle that.
Okay, so we'll follow up with watershed, thank you. Um, okay, I think we've covered. Uh, I just want to check with the board first, I think we've covered everything on there, if there's anything from the board. Any other questions, and I should acknowledge that uh the mayor joined us a short while ago. Welcome, um, if there's any other questions from the board on the H L B items. Hearing those, Chief, please go ahead.
I just want to suggest, just want to throw there as an idea. That instead of looking at a hydrologic study, that the municipality look at a climate action plan. Uh, for the Girdwood Valley or for historic old Girdwood and look at it more inclusively, there's E P A funding for these types of projects. And not necessarily municipality money, um, and look at a overall climate change resilience type of planning project. Uh, for historic old Girdwood, um, or the entire valley versus just a hydrologic study. But a hydrologic study would be part of that E P A uh federal project.
That's actually a um, uh, implementation item that's called out in our draft. Uh, twenty twenty four comprehensive plan that hopefully will be passed next month. Amanda.
And I can clarify, uh, the old Girdwood levy is actually a federally recognized levy as of October seventh. Uh, so that means that C F R title forty four point six five point ten mapping of areas protected by levy systems is very much relevant. To the protection of the people and businesses of old Girdwood.
Maybe you've got anything around that, can you share that with the H L B as well, or do you share it higher up?
I find C F R forty four on the room.
Yeah, yeah, and you said there was something that happened on October the seventh, so.
So what?
Did you say some, as of October the seventh? So that must have been recent.
Seventh, it was thoroughly put on the national database.
Recently.
Yeah, maybe if H L B was informed.
Right, thank you very much. Okay, um, we'll move on to, unless there's anything else on that item on H L B, let's move on to public comment. Persons offering public comments, state full name and address. Limited three minutes, it must be on subjects, not listed on the agenda. Not seeing anyone. Oh.
I want to say.
Jackie would like to join.
Well, I have a chance.
Yeah, please.
To the Heritage Land Bank. I, I want to introduce myself, I've lived here since nineteen seventy seven, so a long time and seen. Girdwood folks. Have a label now, like, it seems like. The muni thinks that we protest about everything and I've lived here a long time and I think that. Yes, we protested when they tried to put a rail spur up the valley to the hotel. Through the, you know, through the woods, we protested and we got that knocked down and. We protested the golf course, taking over the moose matter, which made no sense whatsoever to me, but. So I agree, but I think now. There's a perception in Anchorage that Girdwood people want to say, no, 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 no to everything, and I disagree. I think with this uh industrial park, I think we all want to see. Areas set aside for all kinds of development, you know, malls and things down there where people can. Start businesses and prosper and stay in the valley. I think that seems like a logical, smart place to put development. When you're pushing into areas like the Enchanted Forest that we've all cross-country skied through for years and years and years and. We've gone to meeting after meeting after meeting after fricking meeting for years to get this updated plan and then feel like. That got all thrown out the window because we're a bunch of nimby's and I think it's no, it's just that isn't. A development that anybody in the community wants. We love our skiing and actually land that's forested and can be cross-country skied through has more value. Intrinsically brings people in than um. You know, other stuff, other building condos. So that's all I want to say, I just, as an elder in the community, I just feel that we're getting. Not listened to over things that really matter. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jackie.
My guy.
It was only two and a half minutes. Bob.
Um, can I regress back to one more comment on the industrial park?
Um, we're, we're kind of, I mean, that's already been on the agenda and we've already spoken and we're a little bit over, so I will. Ask indulgence of uh the members in the municipal party, if you'd like, if you're okay staying on a couple more minutes. Like, let's Bob speak again. Let's, Bob speak again. Go ahead. Yes.
Yeah, I just kind of want to point out that, you know, I, I might be somewhat taken care of on that alternative too with that lot deed. However, in my position as a business owner, I'm looking at purchasing a new front-end motor for my business, but I don't know really how much I'm able to spend. If I don't know if that's going to be put up for bid real quick and flushed through some kind of disposal. And if I'm not prepared financially, I'm, I'm going to lose out. So my financial planning is very well impacted by the delays on, on all of this. Thank you.
And I guess I'm just going to make one general comment to relate to something Jackie said. We do have, I mean, I think one of the things underlying a lot of the discussion here, a lot of the discussion over the last couple of years is you know, Gerwood as a community wants more, wants to take more responsibility and, and help direct. We, we tend, we tend to be a very solution-striven organ, uh, community, although it doesn't always seem that way. We have ideas, we have things that can be implemented. Oftentimes, we run against problems of decisions are made in Anchorage for Anchorage Bowl. And that causes, you know, indirectly causes problems here. We had a recent example of that, which I can relate later. So we want to take more responsibility. We want to, we want to be more of a partner where we can be. And a lot of those questions around this are just how we negotiate the space to be able to do that, if we can. I think that's something we want to do. We want to take financial responsibility for the community. That keeps hitting problems on bond approval. So the kind of general, the general argument here is not that we're against things. We get frustrated when we're told what the answer will be, but we actually have better ideas and we get blocked in the implementation. So that was an editorial, but I wanted to summarize where I think the community is coming from. I see a smile from our mayor. She's been the wrong side of that times, I think. Okay, thank you, everybody. We're, we're going to move on to an item now, which is sort of internal to G B O S. We're sorry. With, okay. We can, we can go back to the comment if there are.
I have one more public comment that's not been discussed yet. That is the flooding of Old Gerwood. The flooding of Old Gerwood needs to be addressed. There's three to five feet of stagnant contaminated water due to the lack of compliance with the municipality and D O T's Alaska Discharge Permit, which is their M S Board permit. Title 15 and Title 26 municipal codes as well. It's disgusting. Like, this doesn't get to get denigrated. Like, we want Old Gerwood doesn't deserve to be flooded. We want resolution.
Thank you. Any more public comments?
All right. I just wanted to report out that I met with all the businesses in the gas station mall today and talked to them about tsunami planning and evacuations and where they would go. And they were very receptive. They've all now sat down with their workforce. One of the things that they did ask me was, where's the tsunami signs? I said, we're waiting for the municipality to put them up. So I know that was supposed to happen this fall. I'm hoping it's still going to happen, but just a reminder. We have one of the few areas of residential area, neighborhood that is going to be impacted by a possible tsunami or earthquake. And that levy does actually play into all of that. So just a reminder, if the municipality could put up the tsunami signs, hopefully if you put them up, we never will have one, but it would be nice to get them up. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now we're at the point where we've, we've finished the items which are really part of the joint meeting. We're going to move on to an item that's really G B O S. Anyone in the administration is welcome to stay, but if you want to leave, we understand. You have a few other things to deal with other than Gerwood. So thank you very much for your attendance. And we have many items we're going to pull up on in the next few days and weeks. Thank you.
Thank you for having us. Eva Gardner, the municipal attorney, I just wanted to say hello and I appreciate being here and being invited and learning more about Gerwood. So, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks for having us, guys.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us, even though you're. We're now going to move on to item number four, which is a generous item, L U C two 24 10 dash zero six. G H T, G H E C recommendation for G B O S resolution of support from marijuana tax fund for childcare and early childhood on Gerwood projects. And we have to have two resolutions here. We would like to start this. Jennifer, is this one of yours? First of all, remember.
It isn't in particular. It's, I'm happy to cover it, but this was initiated by Crystal.
So let's, so we can introduce this. This came through, what's the status for? I think a G H T C recommended that we recommended this through land use, didn't they? Direction.
This is Crystal. It has appeared on the G H A C, a new business just as being introduced. And then I would expect or hope for a vote at the next meeting soon.
Thank you. Okay, actually, Crystal, could you just talk us through, let's start with item, so resolution 2024 13 draft. So this is the first one, resolution of support for 2024 marijuana tax proceeds. We spent on childcare and early education Gerwood.
Yes. Basically, where this came from, myself and others have been paying attention to the the ACE Board, which is the Anchorage Childcare and Early Education Board that was formed after the marijuana tax was approved for use in childcare and early education last year. And so we, I, myself and others participated in the work sessions where they were gathering input on how those monies should be spent. So if the summary of those documents were looked at, you would definitely see comments where capital improvements is noted as the need in Gerwood, as many are aware. We are currently building a new childcare facility here in Gerwood, or we have broken ground on our lot and the utilities are in place. And our gravel is on site for the building pad, so we're definitely at the beginning stages of building this. But we are a little bit short to have all of the money that we need to have 100% of the construction funds. So when I saw the ACE Board's recommendations, I noticed that they had put $500,000 for capital improvements. And, you know, this is a need specifically that we have. And so I am asking that we recognize that need and that the Gerwood Board of Supervisors supports trying to get a portion of that, of that capital improvement money available for our project here in Gerwood. So that first, that first resolution, this first resolution is specific to the capital improvement funds which are available.
Okay, thank you. Anyone from the board have comments on the resolution? I have, I have one comment, so I'll, I'll formally hand over the chair to, to Brianna.
All right. Thank you. Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you. I think based on the last comment that Crystal said, I think we could probably just tighten up the therefore slightly and just say we're looking for allocation from the from the capital component of the ACE, of the ACE funds towards the Gerwood childcare projects. So if I'm going to suggest some language, that will be resolved, that G B O S supports allocation on the capital component of the 2024 marijuana tax proceeds to be directed to. There'd be allocation from the capital component of the 2024. So that would be a suggested amendment.
Thank you, Mike. Would someone like to second the amendment?
I guess, sorry, we should have, we should have actually moved the motion first of all. Sorry, first of all, I move the motion that we, we adopt resolution 2024 13.
Do we have a second for the motion?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Brian.
Now I'm going to, now I'm going to formally suggest just a slight amendment to the therefore. So we specifically talk about the capital component.
Great, great. And then is that amendment seconded by a board member?
I'll second that also.
Thank you, Brian. Discussion? Anyone go ahead in the room?
Yeah, just to clarify, I think these are, these are two different resolutions and that makes it a little clearer. This is about capital and the other one is about, is more about operations.
That's correct. Yes. And personally, I, I support the change. That's completely fine with me.
Thank you. Understood from this place. Any other comments from the board? If there are no more comments or discussion, we can pass the amendment first by voting. It might be easier to do roll call, Kyle, for this one, if you're able.
Okay, Kelly Akane?
Agree.
Oh, yes.
What's that?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Ryan Burnett?
Yes.
Mike Engington?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion to amendment passes back to the main motion.
Right. Now, back to the main motion. I would ask for unanimous consent. Are there any objections? Hearing none?
Can I just make one comment on the general, on the general I think this is, I think this is great. I mean, we know, we could go into more detail about why it's important. We could talk about the history of trying to replace the existing building, how we failed to get funding for that. And the existing building is clearly inadequate. And the new building gives higher capacity, but I think that's, we don't need to go into that detail. I think I'm comfortable with where it is now. But I think this is a great use, a great argument. Should, we should ask for a contribution.
Thank you, Mike, and thank you, Crystal, for all of your work on this. And I'll go back to the ask for unanimous consent. Are there any objections? Seeing and hearing none, this motion passes five zero. And then we will be ready to discuss the next one. Mike, would you like to chair for the next one?
Can you continue?
Okay, let's just scroll down, please, Kyle or Margaret. And then, Crystal, you may have already spoken in plenty of detail, but if you'd like to highlight the one difference, go for it.
Sure. So this is basically, you know, the 2024 fund, so a $2.2.9 million was collected in regards to 2024 from the time that the, the, the tax passed to the end of the year. In 2025 and beyond, they are projecting 5.1 million in marijuana tax. And so what I'm suggesting is that under the Gerwood Housing and Economic Stability, that we have become aware that childcare contributes to economic stability of a community, that I would like to see a childcare restricted account held under Gerwood Valley Service Area. What this would do was, would allow Gerwood Valley Service Area to make dispersments to service providers in the area. So Little Bears currently is the only service provider, so it would make sense that they would get, you know, maybe all, but certainly a sizable chunk of those funds. And then if there was another service provider that came in down the road, that's a nonprofit that could be eligible, then this would also allow G B S A to, to split it up so that we're not asking for a direct line item every single year to Little Bears, for instance. We're asking for a line item to come to Gerwood, because Gerwood does contribute to the marijuana tax money. And we would like to see it impact our facility here directly in Gerwood. We also have, you know, different, some different needs, especially in regards to capital. So we're hoping that these funds could be available for both operational needs as well as capital needs. And an example of that would be our playground currently is not funded. As of right now, we are just fencing in our outdoor play area. So if we had this 1% tax come in, we might be able to buy, you know, new playground equipment every year, for instance. So this would be something that would help subsidize from here on out, as long as marijuana tax money is coming from within the Gerwood Valley Service Area. And so this would hopefully mean that we wouldn't have to go advocate for portions like the alcohol tax, you know, how it took many years to get a portion of that to go towards needs in Gerwood, that basically we would ask that this just become part of the line items under this, under the marijuana tax. Thank you.
Thank you, Crystal. Yes, that was very necessary to speak separately about this one. I recall your question to Assemblymember Johnson about the 1%. What did he recommend?
So I, this is another reason why I'm asking in two resolutions, because one, I think that capital, the capital money is the most pressing because we're trying to get that into the budget before they approve it on November 19th. This one i- is possibly better dealt with in Q1 revisions, from what I understand. So the, it's possible that, you know, the assembly would see these resolutions at different times.
Well, thank you for that explanation. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Before making the motion?
Well, I'm just going to make a motion and just formally move that we we pass this resolution.
Perfect. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any seconds?
Does Kelly?
Yeah.
Okay, Kelly, seconded. Any discussion or questions from the board?
I have a question, Brianna. Is, is there any reason to get a little more specific on childcare and speak in terms of licensed childcare?
Yeah, I, I am absolutely open to that amendment. Sorry, I'm not sure if that question was for me or not, but I am welcoming of adding the word licensed in anywhere that you would like, because it definitely is applicable.
Thank you. That was definitely directed to Crystal. So Jennifer has her hand up. You could make that motion, Brian, or we could go to Jennifer next.
Let's see what Jennifer has to say, and then if not, I'd be glad to make a motion.
Okay, great. Jennifer, go ahead.
I'm happy with that motion, but actually I had a question for anybody who can answer it, actually, which is that are we going to hear, do we need to be a little more specific about how those funds, just based on the meeting we just had, about how those funds would be held or where they would go exactly?
Good, yeah. Open to the board to chime in.
I have a, I've commented on that. That, that's my concern about the, the resolution as it stands. So I'm, I think how we do this, whether we can do it, how we do it isn't clear. And I think we would need to resolve the mechanism before we went forward with the suggestion. I'm also not sure it's a good idea about asking for 1%. There are times where we, you know, that may not be the right number. It may need to be higher. I suspect that the assembly is not going to be that comfortable with pushing decision-making power away from themselves, because they ultimately have the power of the purse. So I'm not sure if this is going to go very far. But I think for me, the concern would be how we actually do this, whether we can do this and how we do it. And that might require a little bit more research. So I'm going to, I think my feeling is we're not really ready to pass a resolution on this quite yet. And I agree with Crystal's assessment that this has to be done probably by the Q1 revisions, but doesn't have to be done now. Whereas the previous resolution, I think, did have to be done now, so there was a marker in the initial budget. So I'm going to recommend that we perhaps push this to a, to a later meeting and try and work out what the mechanisms could be before we go forward with this resolution. I'm not quite making a motion to postpone yet, but I'm interested in other people's thoughts.
Okay. Thank you, Mike, and I'm thanking the board as well to have, for having this discussion right now. And the timing is helpful. Any other thoughts? Zach, I could put you on the spot if you have any thoughts.
Oh, yeah, no, not at all. I, I, I don't have any issues with the, the conversation here. I mean, Crystal, I've talked about it. I've also talked the, the administration to get some initial thoughts, although they, you know, reserve the right to, to come to their own conclusions. As far as the timeliness goes, like, yes, I think this, this second piece probably makes more sense to take it up during one Q budget revisions. And that also would offer an opportunity for us to, to think a little bit more about how we want to properly memorialize it. So, yeah, I, I feel comfortable with everything you guys have said here. And then just FYI, I've already submitted a budget amendment for the, the, the 200,000 for capital costs for Little Bears. So that is forthcoming. So thank you for the, the, the resolution that will support that endeavor.
Thank you, Member Johnson. Any other comments from the board?
Can I make a, sorry, did I?
I would just be curious of Crystal's reaction to your proposal.
Oh, yeah. Can I actually make a motion to postpone this so we can discuss it in December? I'd like to make that motion. It's okay.
The motion is on the floor to postpone till December. Do we have a? The motion is on the floor to postpone till December. Do we have a second? Then we can discuss.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Brian. I'll ask Crystal, could you respond to the question from Kelly?
Sure. So I think the one that we just passed was the more pressing matter with a kind of more urgent deadline. This one, I think, could wait, but I, I do, like, what would be helpful is if we could figure this out before the next, like, as far as if that account situation where it could hold money. I mean, right now, there is already established a housing and economic stability fund, from what I understand, that's holding, you know, like the $50,000 for this year, for instance. So I, it's unclear to me why it couldn't just be like added to that account and earmarked specifically for childcare. But I am, I'm prepared to at least say, yeah, let's, we can hold off on that. I would like to get clarity on that before the November 4th GHAC meeting. That way we can pass a resolution or a motion that's suggesting the proper thing that we were recommending to happen. I, and then assuming that we can get that worked out, I, I would like to see it be voted on in, in November, on the November 25th meeting. Because I do think that the sooner that we can show intent of what we would like to do for Q1 at minimum by providing resolutions to our assembly members that show that our community has the support and these requests would be helpful. So I don't know that I want to wait till December, but I'm, I'm fine with pushing it, pushing it later. It does not have, this one does not need to get voted on tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Crystal. Jennifer?
Thank you. If, to the chair, if it's all right, if I address Crystal's question, comment a little bit? And then also build a comment from there. Crystal, I think the issue is that what we just heard from the city is that because we don't have a department specifically for this and specifically part of the muni, that it's, there's this problem. And the difference between the funds is that the other ones came from within our service area to another part of our service area. And the issue here is that it's coming from the muni. So the, the muni wants a certain kind of entity for that to go to if, if anyone in the board disagrees with me, but that's the basic summation. In line with that, I have, again, a general question for the room and beyond, I guess, is, you know, is this something, I hate to jam anything else into parks, and I can just imagine Kyle there rolling his eyes, but I don't know if we have any other choice. And if it was going to be used for a playground, you know, can we make a case for that using an existing department?
I'll speak to that. The assembly can, can assign dedication to the money, so it can only be used for certain purposes when it does get approved. And then in this case, this funding would go into our 406 capital count, which is houses all the money for all the different capital needs from roads to police to fire, parks and rec. And so it would become a line item in there and it would have a designated use that we could only use it for. So for example, if the board or the housing and economic committee, and then through the board, approved playground equipment for the new child center, then we would probably reimburse them out of that fund.
Jennifer, if you want to respond, go ahead. Was I muted? Or Jennifer, you're muted?
Sorry. Oh, sorry. Sorry. In that case, I wondered if we really do need to delay this.
I think the, I think this one was meant to cover both operational and potentially capital expenditures. So I don't think it would be restricted to capital only. The intent was to cover operational costs as well, because generally that's harder to get funding for. Yeah, the reason I pushed it to December rather than November is because the, we need to, what we want to have is a, is a clear answer before GHAC meeting, and that would be their December meeting. And then we can act on it on. We don't have enough time. I think we have less than, well, effectively less than a week before the November meeting, but we have five weeks before their December meeting. So I think the December round is better. The other thing that's slightly better is it's after the vote of the current budget. So that's actually causes slightly less confusion. If we provide this, and we're effectively talking about something further forwards, it looks as if we're trying to jam that into the November time scale. So I, personally, I think this makes more sense to come back to in December. It gives us enough time to resolve some of these questions. Because I'm still a little bit confused by the discussion we had at the beginning of the, of the MOA meeting about exactly what paths we have available now and how funding and land management, et cetera, relates. So I'd like a little bit more time to resolve that.
Any other comments from the board? In the room? I'll add that I'm very support, very much support of this resolution any month. And happy to make it really clean and ready for December with support from the other committees. And if there are no other comments, the motion on the floor is to bring this to our December meeting. It'll be at other meetings before that, obviously. So are there any objections to that motion?
I object.
Okay. Thank you, Jennifer. Any other objections? I'm looking at my screen just in case I see anyone in the room.
Do you want to do a roll call now that there's objection?
Yeah, sure.
Can I just clarify?
Brianna, you have questions from your board?
I just would love, Crystal, to reply to if November, if December's problematic in comparison to her November recommendation. I don't have enough context to know. And so I really would value your insight.
Thanks, Kelly. Go ahead, Crystal.
And to that, I would actually ask Zach, when is too late to get input regarding first quarter bud, budget revisions? Like, when would be an appropriate time to put something forward for a suggestion on that and when would be too late?
Oh, that's a, that's a great question. Frankly, I think if we had it by March, we'd be fine. Also, you know, I mean, this is a, an advisory, you know, I mean, a resolution from, from GBOS, you know, is, is there to inform our decision-making. So I, I think even if it passes tonight, we still know that we have on record that Girdwood Board of Supervisors supports something with this intent. If sort of the mechanics of it get hashed out later, then I'm not sure that's entirely problematic. But if we want to take a little extra time to, to sort of tighten up ahead of time, I don't think that's harmful either. But for Q1, you know, it's, hey, if we, if we do it now and it's sort of in our back pocket, we still have it. But really, I don't think we necessarily need to have something to, to, to reference until, yeah, probably March timeframe, I think, would be fine.
Thank you, Zach, and thank you, Crystal and Kelly. That made me want to add another comment, and that is that I would be open to having this in November, but I thought the suggestion was based on the other committees having two meetings before. Is that correct, Mike? Is that how you were?
The idea was we try and resolve the mechanical issues before GHAC votes in December. So rather than GHAC talk about it when it's not clear what we do or whether we can do it, we would have enough time to resolve those questions. GHAC can vote in December, and then the next opportunity for us is December as well. I also know that owner said she can help with some of the mechanical questions as well, so we should follow up with her.
Okay, great. Thank you. Does the board feel like they have enough information to make us a vote? If I don't, I can, if I don't hear anything, I'll ask Kyle for the roll call, and that is to move this to December.
Are you ready?
Yes.
Kelly Ockene?
Yes.
Brian Burnett?
Yes.
Mike Edgerton?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
No.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-1.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for that discussion and all the information. Thank you, Crystal, for presenting and being on the meeting today. So now the, back to the agenda. Mike, would you like to wrap it up?
Sure, I'll call for a gentleman. Thank you. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.